At six o'clock, I'd like to call a meeting to order if you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hello. Good evening. Welcome to our August 13, 2018 regular meeting. And with the call of order and Pledge of Allegiance, I have this over the approval of the agenda.
I just have a direction or a petition. The Treasurer's report has a June and July, so I need a motion for that. My name wasn't here last year, last month. It's on the back. And maybe just one motion, June and July. I don't think that's permanent.
And I will make a motion. I'll enter that into our agenda. Anything else? Anything else? Who isn't looking for approval to...
McCafferty. Yeah. Lake.
Yes.
Baraco.
Yes.
And with that, now the approval of the minutes. The executive session, June 25th. This was a closed session.
I think question to approve the minutes dated 6:25 to opening time.
Support.
Anything else? If not, phone call please.
McKafferty. Yeah. Lake.
Yes.
Baraco.
Yes.
Initial laws, please hand them back.
Oh, and this one?
Please.
I can't balance this.
Okay. The next one would be the regular meeting, July 9, 2018. Comments? I must report a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for July 9.
Motion to approve the minutes dated July 9, 2018, to the regular village council meeting.
Support.
Anything else? Please.
McCafferty. Yeah. Lake.
Yes.
Baraco.
Yes.
The last one is our special meeting on July 26, 2018. Any discussion? No comments. I'm looking for a motion, please.
Motion to approve minutes for the special council meeting dated July 26, 2018.
Support.
Anything else?
McCafferty. Yeah. Lake.
Yes.
Baraco.
Yes.
And the Treasurer's report.
I'll make a motion to approve the Treasurer's report dated June 30, 2018, and also the Treasurer's report dated July 31, 2018.
Support.
McKafferty. Yeah. Lake.
Yes.
Baraco.
Yes.
Baldwin.
The bills and transfer are green sheet.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills and transfers dated July 1 through July 31, 2018.
Support. Any other discussion?
McCafferty. Yeah. Lake.
Yes.
Baraco.
Yes.
This opens up the meeting for our first round of public comment. Please, this is items that are on the agenda. Give yourself three minutes. Address the chair.
My name is Keith Walworth. I know there's going to be discussion tonight regarding the mill pond spring. There's been talk about a special assessment from those living on the mill pond. In your packet, there was a letter signed by a lot of the residents on the mill pond in opposition to the special assessment and some of the reasons for that opposition. It's our feeling that since the mill pond is not privately... It is not private and that it's owned by the village of Goodrich, that it should be created no differently than any other piece of property that the village maintains. Years ago, before the weed treatments, the pond was, you know, a real eyesore and it wasn't really being able to be used for recreational purposes. The weed treatments have made a huge, huge difference in beautifying the mill pond and making it back into a valuable resource that everyone can enjoy. The pond is not exclusively used by mill pond residents. I see people all the time that are using the mill pond. The mill pond is a focal point of the community and the Massey Plan makes many references to the benefits and value of the pond. In my opinion, the village should make the pond more accessible to all the residents and good rich. There's currently no public access on the mill pond, although I believe that the village should work towards that goal of providing such an access in the future. The mill pond is also critical for the fire department and provides the needed water to fight fires throughout the community. Keeping the mill pond free of weeds keeps the fire department intake free and clear of weeds, enabling them to continue to draw water and keep this community safe from fires. When discussing the weed treatments tonight, I hope you all weigh all aspects of the benefits of keeping the mill pond free of weeds and encourage the council to continue the weed treatments so that everyone in the community can enjoy this great resource. Thank you.
Butchers are all even good. I agree with Justin you said. In addition to that, last week, on the last meeting, I gave council members information that basically said that the 1972 sales agreement between Flint and the village allowed the village to maintain the dam and the waters there within. So based on that, Mr. Bick, who's not here this evening, basically said that, oh, there's a statute now that supersedes them. I'd like to know what that statute is and what's the content. We couldn't find anything that would negate that agreement and the sales agreement. We will vigorously defend that agreement, be on legal grounds and what have you. So we're asking, let's not have to go through that and let's just will continue forward with the village having a responsibility for that pond. How's everybody doing tonight? So this is currently the mill pond. And the drainage ditches coming from everybody's property that goes into the mill pond. Marked in red. I personally think it's everybody's responsibility, not, you know, along with the people living in the mill pond, to pay for it. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, everybody said, "The village, village, we are the village." This is, we are the village. This is, their money comes from us. You know, it doesn't come from Mortonville or Burton. It comes from all the people here. Everybody, whether on you live on it, you use it, one way or another. It comes off the... Basically what this is, is this is the... It's not the sewage, just the rainwater and stuff like that that gets into the... Coming out the drains and goes into the mill pond. So when you guys water your grass or paralyze your grass, it ends up in the mill pond. So like I said, as far as I'm concerned, it should be split amongst everybody along with... I think, Mark, if I'm not mistaken, are they just spraying the upper part for weeds?
Basically where they can navigate.
Where they can navigate? I mean, to do it, what they're doing is they're cleaning the mill pond because the fire department takes out, can take out 1,050 gallons a minute to fill their tanks. If they can't fill their tanks, then everybody's in jeopardy. So this is my opinion. Support.
If I could, sir, just out of my background, your first name is fine.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, by the way, for continuing to manage the weeds in the mill pond. In the last week's paper, it was talking about Gale Lake and the assessment that's going to be given to the people who live on the lake. Same thing happens Lake Shinigah. If you live on the lake, there's maintenance. Just like with your car, tune ups, oil changes, something like that. If you choose to live on the pond, and we all wish that we could, but we can't afford it, there's maintenance for it, and that includes the weeds. So yes, I do think that if it does come to a special assessment for having a weed removal, it should not be given to everybody because we don't all live on the lake. We don't have access to the lake, and we all can't get on the lake and enjoy it like the homeowners on the lake can.
Jim Moore. The village owns the pond, right? Does the village own Lake Shinigah? That's why the people on Lake Shinigah pay for their own upkeep.
Gale Lake's in the Ad List, I have to tell you about that.
Just a second. You have more?
I'd just like to make one more comment quickly in regards to, you know, I understand Gale Lake and Lake Shinigah are special assessed. They are also private lakes. You cannot get on those lakes. The mill pond belongs to the village. It belongs to all of the residents of the village. People say, "Well, we don't have access." Well, there is no public access, but I guarantee you, people do put boats in up at the gas station. I've seen them. I live on Upper Park, and there's a curb there that hugs the mill pond. Have people pull out there and put their boats in. So there are a lot of people that do use that mill pond. And I think that's where you got to distinguish the differences, is that the village owns the mill pond. It is, it's not private. And the fact that there's no public access, again, like I said, that's something that, you know, this village needs. And if there's some way, somehow, public access can be put on there, I think that'd be a goal that would benefit. Thank you.
Tim, somebody?
Can we get an hour to make what's often made?
Favorite speakers?
I'm Jenny McKenzie.
Hi, Jim Green.
With the Good Times and Good Rich community, Southern Dance Group. We just want to thank the village for their support, just all the cast of characters we'd like to thank.
Yeah, without forgetting anyone, we'd like to thank the village, Goodrich DPW, Goodrich School District, Goodrich Bus Brad, Tennessee County Road Commission. Seamless collaboration. You know, our festival's a huge success because everyone's working together and we really appreciate it. The festival, I hope people had a chance to come see it. It is growing. We're continuing to grow and give back to community. And without the support of all these people we just mentioned, I don't think it wouldn't be possible. So we'd like to thank everybody.
That was it. I'm Canada. Same weekend next year.
All weekend later?
Publicly, no comment.
No, probably Baraco.
Thank you very much.
But we will be back.
You guys should agree.
Thank you.
Is there anything else? If not, that's move on. I finished. Does not see police report. If you would, sir.
Received a police report from Sergeant Leiber down at the Sheriff's Department. White Lake, the report, and he encountered several of the dead just down here. Not exactly sure why, but all of them that I've spoken with have commented that it seems to be, for whatever unknown reason, it does seem to be busier than it has been in the past. I see quite a few traffic stops. I see a lot of medical runs. I do see, the one thing that comes to mind, and Jackie, if you can maybe expand on this, the renovation of the Milak Hospital, is that flat rock that is renovating that? You're not sure?
I have a name of the person, but I don't have the name.
You don't have the name or anything? Because I do see a lot of runs out to Nico's place on some of the group homes out on Washburn. There seems to be, and the couple of guys that I talked to did say that for whatever reason, the group homes just seem to be off the hook lately. Said they're between medical runs. I'm sorry.
It's not a group home. It's state.
Okay.
Or artistic.
Right. That's why I was asking. I wasn't sure what type of facility, the details with that, or who was running it. Said that the, there was some question about the management of the group homes that were, that kept popping up on the call list.
That's it?
That's it.
Council, any questions for?
I have a question. When they have traffic stops, how do you know if they wrote a ticket? Does it say on there?
No, it doesn't.
Can we get that number? No.
How many were written versus how many warnings?
Traffic warnings versus...
I will talk to George and see if that's something that we can get a hold of. I'm trying to, I know they've changed the reporting system in the last couple of years, and I'm not sure what the reports are able to generate, but I'll talk to him and see if that's something that we can do. Okay?
What are you thinking, three yards wide? What's the difference wide?
Because if people continue to speed and then run over somebody because they got a warning five times, you should be getting a ticket prior to running over somebody.
Oh, there's a, there's a lot more that's being pulled over. And I don't know if that's because, remember, but really voting for these guys and, you know, their contracts, there have been a lot of complaints that they are not pulling any speeders over. And I just, that's what I, I talked to Mr. White a little earlier, if that's why there were so many, why there's so much activity, if they were trying to show their presence to the voters, you know, justify their jobs.
When we were getting the handwriting machines, did they, did they say like warning or ticket on the handwriting sheets? Because I think that they did, but I'm not...
I don't believe so.
Was it in the house? Did they write a ticket?
Yeah.
If...
Prior to?
Oh, prior to me? Okay. The only ones that I ever recall seeing was a significant activity log in that those were typically something where a complaint number was pulled and a report generated as opposed to just a warning or a ticket.
I can show you a photo.
Okay.
Anything else, counsel?
No.
Good. Number two would be, did he straighten that straighter? Still on the floor, sir?
Want to shout out for Matt in there. They did a fantastic job. Park looked fantastic. Boy was down there setting up the layout for the booth for Good Times in Goodrich. They did a lot of hard work down there cleaning the place up. Did have a couple of people mention, well, why are they spending the extra time cleaning it up now? How can they don't just keep it this clean? And, you know, it's kind of the difference going a little, little bit above and beyond in doing it, doing it a little bit extra for the extra, for the event. But I've talked to the guys about that and addressed it, and maybe we can make it a little bit easier for the cleanup for the event next year. Aaron seems to be working out fantastic. I've had several conversations with him. Super nice guy. I do know that they're doing some street repairs and maintenance, a little bit of asphalt going on. So if you see them, I'll try and slow down a little bit and give them a little bit of extra room on the roads.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Meeting's tomorrow.
Water and waste?
Meeting's Wednesday. First one for the summers.
We got too many dates, though. Number three would be park and rucks. I don't know. I see. Are you there?
Good evening. Wendy, Parks and Rents here. I'd like to thank you, Mr. Baldwin, after our last council meeting. Action was taken and we got the trail started at the Friendship Path. The clearing had taken place. It has been cleared. And also the spraying for the poison ivy has started. So we're looking at that. There were signs that, you know, warning about poison ivy. And then the spraying has started. But great news, the path clearing went great. It's just really wonderful. So get a chance to go down there and walk. It is beautiful to be able to walk through the woods and see that. Also, we are in the process of getting the signage pranked for the beginning of the trail and at the other end, rules for that. The two scout projects are starting, so they're excited to be able to move ahead with their projects. They're Eagle Scouts. And we are working out a cost estimate for materials for the stairs needed at the far end where the steep hill is. That's where the path will continue up. And there will need to be some stairs going up that hillside. And hopefully, we can get some volunteers to help work with constructing them. Also, the Michigan Nature Association has been asked their opinion about the Trail of Keep. And they suggested a biodegradable fabric on areas that are prone to erosion. And other than that, just to let the natural vegetation grow back in, you know, keep it in mow and stuff, but having the low, putting, you know, not where it's bare dirt, but having a little vegetation growing back in will help with erosion. So that's about all we got right now for that. I mean, there's still a lot of work to do, and the volunteers will be needed. But we have to start, so it's pretty exciting. Thank you.
McCafferty? Yeah?
I was not present at the meeting, but I did, I did walk the pathway. And it's, it really is a beautiful piece. It's very, it's very tranquil back there. It's very nice. So thank you for following. Thank you all the volunteers and parks and rec members who helped with that. Great assets to the community. They should be applauded.
Thank you. You know who you all are too. It's no danger. But thank you very much for, you guys, for doing all of this. Code enforcement, please.
Our code enforcement officer is back to work now. He was saw for about two months with a torn kneecap and tendon and other things. He's been working on different areas with big trucks being parked, grass, cleaning up 115 as far as signage is concerned. So he's back to work on that. Glad that he is.
And I know firsthand as well, you guys do. Number five, administrator.
I had made a bid here just for discussion purposes. We had talked about doing a street project from Eagle Road Bridge down to near the old fire department. We had grant money to do from the fire department out to the ball, to be a call course. And we did the bridge. We did 215. But we've talked about looking into doing that. Delta paving has given us a bid for that. It's approximately $60,000. And we're looking for us to see if this is a project that we want to pursue and get additional bids for doing that. It's, again, another focal point of the village, the downtown.
Counsel? Just discussion.
I think it's something we should look into further, absolutely. Let's get a few further bids and see what, see what we're looking at.
I agree. I would also like to see why we're doing this, is I would like to look into putting a warning light at the corner of Clarence and Eagle Road for the emergency vehicles coming out from the fire hall. There should be one there.
I would agree.
There are people out there driving that are hearing impaired. And I get to know. A lot of those guys come in pretty fast. Yeah, I think that, I agree with Mr. White. McCafferty, anything?
No. Anything to make the downtown area look nicer. The warning light, it's a, it's a great idea. We were just up north over the weekend, and we were in some, some little town, and their little fire department had, you know, warning lights went right outside. And there's, you know, I don't know how many people are in that town. I don't think that there were many. But I can't speak for them, but it's a, it's a good idea. And it's also, it's helpful to people who are hearing impaired, so they don't get struck by a fire truck.
When, this goes back many years, when they were going to purchase that piece of property down there, that was one of the recommendations from the township, Tennessee County Road Department, Sheriff's Department, that there should be an emergency mark there. This is about 20 some years ago. And nothing's ever been done. There's got to be some grant money out there available for that.
As a driver of the trucks, I'm sure they would appreciate it as well.
I'm sure they would. So if we can look into that, maybe next month, we can go a little further.
I do think it's a good idea, yes. But also, you said last, last time about the tornado sirens not being working. Is that going to be fixed?
What it was, is they're not going to do the daily noon siren. There's something wrong with the timer.
Okay.
But the, is it the first?
First Sunday?
Saturday.
Saturday morning?
I just thought it was lunchtime.
I was not home. I'm not sure if it went off or not, but I was told.
Yes. I forgot to eat.
But they already use it for emergency purposes instead of...
Yes, yes. It's supposed to be. The downside on that, as I looked into and I complained about it a little bit, is the birds taking that over. It can be a problem.
My name is looking into that siren system somehow hacked. And I don't think it was in our area. I can't hear it at my house. But a lot of other areas, it was going off periodically at the wrong time. It was hacked?
Yeah.
Yeah. Because it's radio controlled, they found the frequency.
That's unfair. Better thing to hack into than a siren system on the small community.
I took cover six times.
I was scared. I go to the bottom shelf.
Anything on sidewalks?
I still have one.
That's for you. And it's possible, I mean, we could address those a little further with our, our staff that we have. I've tried numerous times to get contractors to promote, but, you know, at least not yet.
We do have an area that, if we do something with the downtown, or if we don't, we'll buy smoke and chase. The sidewalk is sinking down, so it curves higher than the sidewalk. So something needs to be done with that before we have a problem. I think it's too big of a job for the DPW to do on that particular area. I've talked to both of the people and they seem to think it should be hired out. It's a pretty big side.
Now, it's possible, maybe we could coordinate something with some of the guys that are pouring here next to us. And maybe able to jump on that and do it with the help of the DPW to remove it. And they could just pour it, just a thought. Next one on the list is the Mill Pond Spray. Counsel, it got awful quiet in there.
Fire table, table, next one.
I thought at the, at the last meeting, the pond is village property. The parks are village property. We, we maintain those. I think the pond is in the master plan as a focal point of the community. It was, it's in the master plan that it's an asset to the community, that it's important to the community. It's not the fault of the people that live on the pond that there is no public access. I don't feel, nor do any of the people who signed the, the piece of paper objecting to this. And many people in the room who are objecting to this feel that something that the, that is village owned solely needs their responsibility to maintain. Nor is it, again, it's not their fault that there isn't public access. It's not like they built a wall and gated it up. I know people who don't live on the pond that, that use the pond. I know people that come from Ortonville that use the pond. So it's, that's, that's my feeling and I'm going off, off the signatures that, that were obtained.
What was the cost of doing this?
Four thousand dollars.
That's one application? That's one and you do it twice a year each year?
We've been doing it once a year in the past. We actually will be doing it every year.
And I don't think it's been done every year.
I don't know about how the rule is.
I don't think it's been done every year.
I think it was sixteen was the last time. I think that's in this year, almost two years.
And I believe there's a four hundred dollar per minute on top of that. Counsel, Mr. Baracko, Mr. White. There's no question, it would be nice if we could go through at the top of the hill where the guardrail is and the dam and put something in there for access for kayaks and canoes. And maybe that's something that the park, you guys can think about that. On how you could, how you could incorporate something down there so that it did give all athletic residents access to the pond. And I think that could be done in a very reasonable place.
And what about, what about property that's, that's along the park? I mean, that's, that's something to think about, something that could be a pain to, to allow people access to it.
There's property on M-15 next to the gas station that's lost for sale and same part of the canyon still is. It's a pretty good question.
There could possibly be property on Ridge Road.
Yes. But I think those are things that we should really look into to give the non-repairing units access to it.
The long range plan that we worked with Lee Turner on for planning purposes have something like that. I'm able, preferably could do something like that without doing the rest of the, the project. I mean, basically that was putting location for kayaks on the west end of where the dam is and if there's, here there were trees there. And then parking across the way.
Basically, a break in the guardrail and just a very small area down there with some large boulders would suffice, basically.
I don't know. We have kayaks, we, we haul them all over the place. It's not difficult to get a kayak out on the water.
But you have to provide parking and a place for them to get down to the water. And it'd be known that this is the access point for.
Are we on the top mark?
No. Counsel?
I don't know, I see both sides of the story. I mean, I see, I see like if, you know, if something's wrong with the dam, I know I'd be special ass if I opened the dam. So I see both sides of it. And I do think we should have public access, but when the same residents complain if it was flooded with kayaks into, I don't know, you know, there's too many floodwater on the pond. So I just, I don't know, it's only four thousand dollars, which to me is... To maintain a large piece of property for four thousand dollars is not a very big expense.
It's not a big expense. And there's, I mean, there's, there's roads I don't travel on that my taxes are going to fix bridges on. I don't, I don't use those bridges, but I'm, I'm paying to maintain them for my taxes. Why? Because the village maintains those roads. And that's part of what my taxes go for. I mean, this is a focal point. It's, it's one of the big assets that the village has that, that makes it nice. And it's nice driving by the pond and seeing it. It's pretty in the winter time when there's snow covering it. It's pretty in the summertime, in the fall time, all time. It's, it's an asset. It's in, it's in the master plan to be maintained. It's in the, like I said before, I've said it before, I don't need to repeat myself.
Mr.?
I don't remember.
It'll happen in a couple more years.
Right, right, it might.
Mr. White, anything to add?
No, I'm with Tim. I see both sides. I see both sides of it, you know, but I don't live on it. But, and you know, you know, but like you said, it is a focal point. It is in the master plan. It is something that, you know, as a community, you know, it was kind of our job to maintain it. You know, if, if it was, I don't know. A little bit more secluded where there was absolutely no access to it, you know, similar to, or privately similar to Shigagaga Lake, I could see, you know, I, I could see a stronger argument for it. But, you know, with the likelihood of having the property, the Parks and Rec, you know, the drought down here and with the park there next to it, you know, eventually if everything works out for us, we will have access to it through that park.
So the consensus is we'll leave it as it is? We continue the spray? I'm with you. Somebody make a motion, Ted?
I'll make a motion to continue the Mill Pond Park Spray.
Support.
Any other discussion?
McCaffrey? Yes, like?
Yes.
Baracko?
Yes.
Yes. Last one I haven't finished, business is a donation property. Mr. Suge, please.
I brought this up at the last meeting and it was stable until the end of this meeting. And the only question, the only thing that I have is what I supplied to you. The ground is not stable, I mean, it's stable for parking lots, it's not, not stable. There's no house building on it. So it still is offering that to the village. If you want it, you can have it with net. Maybe like you said last time, the school might be interested in taking the location. It could be an overflow on the parking lot for different functions. Primarily happen at the school or for good times and privilege. But it is something else that the village would have to maintain. Like a variance cannot have an access.
I think that you'd want to keep it to where water can go through it. Remove the top soil fabric and then stone top, then it would be a perfect scenario. Mr. White, you talked about the fact that we're trying to see if the school would show any interest in it. That would be an overflow from the school, and I think that's, I think that's a pretty good idea.
Yeah, because there's always been a problem with parking along Seneca Street when Reed's having events going on, get parking along Gary Street, along Seneca Street. You know, put a, an overflow parking lot in there to help out, to help keep some of the parents out of the road when there's stuff going on.
And I'll tell you what, sir, if you would want to take a point on that, you have to talk to the school and see what they said. Maybe we could work with them. At the same cost of it, you know.
I, I think that the, that the school should be presented with it. I mean, it's just, it's something else for the, for the village to maintain. It, it's, you know, what, so we throw gravel over the top of it, now we call it a parking lot. I mean, who is, you know, weeds are growing. People are going to complain that it's now becoming an eyesore. And then it's just, it's another, it's a, the gesture of wanting to donate the property is, is very gracious. And I'm not taking that away from anybody, but I'm just looking at the extra work and for the village to maintain something else. And if it's not suitable for, for building, I mean, how is the drainage? How is that extra weight of, of gravel on the main concrete? While if it can't hold a house, is it going to hold a parking lot with cars? Is it, there's, there's too many what ifs for me on the, on the village campus. And I'm not, I'm not a builder. I have no idea how much weight concrete can hold. But these were questions that, that I get even from the last time it was presented.
I've been contacted from Mr. Elkin. That's what you wish. And tell him thank you very much and give him a suggestion that maybe he asks the school. I have to get back to the man.
Consensus, counsel?
I've got to get ahold of Mr. Elkin at the school regarding something else anyways. Let me...
I don't know that it's our right to be asking somebody else to take a donation. That's all I'm saying.
Or just to see if there's, if there's interest there, to see if it worked for, for the, you know, the donor or some person.
Maybe I can save the gentleman a phone call. That, that was my thought. So it, I guess in the meantime, if you'd like to give him a phone call and respectfully decline, I think that would probably be in order.
We all agree with that? Last one, the next one is new business, the appointment of a temporary superintendent to public works. You are the street administrator, Mr. White. I'm going to let you take it from there.
I guess I, my thought was talk to counsel, see, did, did you have a chance to talk with Jackie? Is this something that you and I can handle or?
Seems to be the consensus of the counsel that we should have somebody as a crew leader or if you will.
Yeah.
Better known as a temporary superintendent.
Yeah, absolutely. That being said, with, with him being the full-time employee, with him having the years of experience and everything like that, I, I guess I would suggest that he be appointed temporary superintendent of Public Works.
Until the?
Until the position.
Is formally posted?
Correct.
Yeah, no, that's?
To handle the day-to-day business, decisions, purchases, scheduling, stuff like that.
Yeah, I know you and I had talked briefly after the, after the last meeting. And I know, I mean, I, I work for the army. And when we have somebody, a boss leave to go to a different area, somebody is temporarily promoted to fill the duties of the, of our supervisor. So we're not running around not with no supervision. And then that person who's taking the place can, you know, apply for the job once it's formally posted. They may or may not get it. It's not, it's not a for sure. It's not a given that that person's going to get anything. But it's just so it doesn't, you know, that work isn't transferred to somebody else who already has work to do and they don't need to be bothered with the menial decisions. I think, I think this is a good idea.
I mean, if it was the consensus of the, of the council, you know, I could continue talking to them on an occasional basis and let them remain just people, coworkers. Mark and I can take the responsibility, starting to make decisions. But I think, you know, it would be probably easier for the, for the smooth running of the DPW to have a white man down there.
I agree.
No, I agree.
That's the case, I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to appoint man being temporary superintendent of public works.
For? Any discussion?
McCaffrey? Yes, like?
Yes.
Baracko?
Yes.
Uh, last round of public counter? Agree to speak about it? But just not, not about anywhere.
I just wonder if everybody knows what we had. And like seven measures in the blue, seven papers of the, and, and EMT.
Were they on EMT Live as well?
EMT what?
EMT Live as well. I don't believe we...
That is.
I know it was discussed, I don't, I don't know.
EMT Live is, I know the views on EMT Live, no.
What's that?
The views amount on EMT Live, um, I don't, I don't know how you would put it ahead of that. You said you didn't want it at the general, I know that.
I didn't necessarily mean we wanted it there, just wasn't there as well.
I don't know, are you a book on that?
I think they put her on EMT Live.
Okay.
Sir?
Richard Ceroli. Initially, I'd like to dispel the conversation as it pertained to the last time that the council had to look for an administrator clerk, the process that was there. It appears that the conversation, including some of this being supported by a prior councilman, that the most effective or the most person that was selected was not the most qualified. And secondly, that there were some negotiations that were willing to take place as it pertained to salary. That never took place. That is not true. I contacted the other council, prior councilmen, previous councilmen. They all concur that of the six people that were bented, Jackie was the most qualified. And it was never a discussion as to anyone working for less than what was posted at that time as the se- as the salary. So I hope that ends that conversation. Secondly, I downloaded the, the posting, the current posting from the municipal, uh, team, municipal league, Michigan Municipal League. And it was quite extensive as to what the responsibilities would be. Comprehensive knowledge of municipal legislative processes, knowledge of laws related to open reading acts, ability to interpret the state constitution, statutes, village ordinances, and village charter, development overseeing of the village budgets. Quite extensive, quite, needed quite a bit of knowledge to, to address that. I think it was very, very complete as what we'd be looking for. Then for what the requirements are, very quickly, the successful candidate will possess a bachelor's degree from an accredited university or college in political science, political administration or another closely related field, or a master's degree, or equivalent years of experience as a municipal manager or administrator preferred. Five years or more of progressively more responsible municipal management experience preferred. I don't have any idea what that means. Like, what is five years of progressively more responsible municipal management experience preferred? Can sometimes, somebody break that down to, to pretty, you know, simple, for simple people like me, to what that means? In addition, looking for someone with that kind of experience for the amount of money that we want to pay, I'm out in the business world every day. There's a, there's a labor problem, there is finding qualified people. I don't think you find someone with five years of experience. So that leads us back to someone with a bachelor's degree or someone with a master's degree that have no practical experiences. That's what we're going to get to start running this, this village? Although, Mr. Big, not that he's saying that, because he's not here, said they can take classes. Come on, that's very reasonable. You've got to find someone that has the capabilities of doing all these things. Either pay them more money or make, make some other concessions, you're not going to get what you're looking for, for that kind of money. I have copies of this, for anybody that's interested, if anyone, if you're willing, I'd like to give you one.
Anyone else? If none, okay, that's all. Your name was?
Just first.
Edson, Ed. Georgia and I were, my wife Georgia, were driving on M fifteen. We pulled into the parking lot just on this side of the bridge. Why can't we use that as access to the milk pond? There's a parking lot there. Honey, where's it at? It's right next to like the last house.
Cross, cross from the car wash.
Looks, looks like something was there before.
It used to be the, the pond, the pond place, yeah. That's, yeah.
Yeah, the pond place.
That's what we said, a little piece of property next to the gas station.
We're, we're, we're.
We're talking, we're talking on turf.
Please address this here.
I, I'm not sure where it's at or what they call it. But I mean, why couldn't we use that as access? You're dumping into the river, but you're still getting access to the milk pond. You've got a parking lot. All you do is really have to create a path down to the, to the river. Just a thought, I don't know what property that is, but.
Well, we'll touch on that at the end of the meeting, but we don't respond during public counter.
The other thing that I wanted to say is, I checked into, what's off? I checked into the, uh, generator hydro system for the milk pond. And what the payback would be, and I talked to the, to the P E Q and Consumers Energy. They will only give us back what we, our consumption is, so whatever that is. I don't know if that ever was a thought, or there is grants out there, he said. And I thought to myself, I'm like, well, wouldn't it be nice, you want to enhance this? George and I are new to the area, but to me, you want to enhance the town, put a nice water feature on the other, other side where people could see it lit up at night, and it could all be run off the dam free electricity. That's just my thought, you know, but, but whatever that worth.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Linda, and I think we've talked about this a couple of different times, and I'm just wondering what the situation is with the roads and for the communities that we talked about having road freedom, so if I get an update on where that is.
Right in, on Eagle Road, um, opposite of the store, right where the guardrail pretty much ends there. There was an old cement ramp, well, right down in the milk pond, right there. Now, I think it's been covered up because of them drilling the holes and stuff like that to put that guardrail in, because it's mostly dirt, and there's a lot of grass on there. But I bet if somebody went down there with a shovel, that that cement slab going down in the milk pond is still there. Now, I've never mentioned it before, because I, I never really thought that that was a real safe place for people to be, you know, put stuff in. You've got the guardrail and this and that. You know, maybe if the guardrail was, was pulled back a little bit, or, or so that maybe, maybe it could be, be access. But I just want to point it out, so it might be, you know, someone that you might not have the D P W, go down under the shovel, because I'm, I'm pretty sure there's already a cement slab right there.
Anyone else? If not, council, it's your turn.
We are meeting with my sub next week. We're meeting with my sub next week to find out if we want to go ahead and, when we want to go ahead and then I'm going to report back to Tim, you know, with my sub things. I'm assuming there's a chairperson yourself, or hopefully. When I report back to Tim next week after our meeting, I'm assuming we can contact each chairperson and figure out what you guys want to do. I know it's going to be partially decided on what you guys vote, right, and yourself.
Well, I understood that there, there needs to be kind of like procedure, and we didn't get any other information on that.
See, my understanding is, if my sub decides to do it, right, if all folks say we're going to do it, we determine whether we want to do it, right? And then at that point, then we would contact to get the special assessment done for us. And now if we combine with everybody, that's great, but I can't, I can't, I know my sub's not going to wait for everybody else, just because we're in dire need. So if we're going to do it, we're simply go ahead and do it, because it's too hard to coordinate six different subs all at the same time. I, I. So I, that's my, my take, if you have a head that says they want to do it, you guys all voted for it, they want to get it done, then I would say get with Tim and say, hey, we're ready to go, we're ready, if you want to do it, we want to get a real price, then we get a real price.
Is there a chairperson in my subdivision?
I asked you, was there?
I am, no, I, I'm not allowed to attend the meeting, so I have no idea.
No, do you have an association in your sub?
No, no, no.
Then it would be you knocking on doors and saying, hey.
Hope that wasn't my, like, you guys were supposed to be doing that, get people's opinions, not, not me.
I can't vote for your sub.
I didn't say that you were to vote for my sub, but you were, you guys were going to hold meetings and, and let people know. And I was so black handed from those meetings, so I don't know what's happened.
From our last meeting, it's two up in the air from one sub wanting to do something and the other sub not wanting to do something. So if you feel in your sub, if there's a consensus that you guys want to get something done, you want to pay for it, then bring it to the table. And so we got to get the ownership before you let, that's how I deal. And that's my sub doing it.
You might want to check and see how much money the village has, there's a lot of engineering costs that fall into that. I mean, your, your little sub just don't dictate what the village is going to do, because the engineering is going to be an awful lot of money for.
Well, we're paying, the sub is paying for it, we're paying for it.
The village does not have to pay.
No, if they're going to do it that way, they don't have to.
Yeah, that's all.
It's going to be extremely expensive.
Take it, burn it on yourself.
This is, uh, anything else you want to bring up?
No, no, nothing.
To address the concern, I, maybe it was unclear at the last meeting, I thought it was left clear that, um, each individual neighborhood was going to get together, discuss whether or not they wished to move forward with it and get back with us. Like your sub, Tim's sub, has the, uh, the association. In fact, I believe you guys have two associations.
Two associations, sir.
Okay. It, it, it would be very cost-effective if we can get, um, because each company has a mobilization fee, they charge you X amount of dollars to haul their equipment out here. And once it's here, if they do your sub, if they do Tim's sub, if they do Eagle Road like we're talking about, you know, if we do all of these other subs, as a whole, the community, you know, the, the cost savings can be passed along, because now we're not saving, you know, we're not paying multiple mobilization fees. But where I thought it was left, like I said, I thought it was clear, maybe not, that it, it was going to be up to each individual subdivision's, um, um, association to decide whether you need, whether you needed to move forward or wanted to move forward as, as a sub. And then get back with us to initiate the, uh, the special assessment for the sub.
I have more meetings than that could play down.
Well, it was in last year's meeting, last June.
But there was, you had said there was going to be another meeting because that, the special, the special assessment, does the engineering go into that special assessment? Does the association have to come up with the money to pay for engineering? And I thought those things would be a little bit more defined. But you can't go up to the neighbor and say, hey, we want to do our roads, we don't know if it's a hundred thousand or two hundred and fifty.
Uh, and that's, that's what I, I had gone around, I've got some very rudimentary numbers from one of the local paving companies. He and I spent a day riding around throughout the subdivision.
I remember that was Spark.
Yeah, looking at all of the different, uh, the different subs, the different roads. Some of them are going to require a complete tear off, certain portions of, of your sub are going all the way down to the base, new base, new sand, um, some drainage issues that he's looking at. You know, I, I do have, if, if you'd like to get with me after and let me know when your next association meeting is, I.
Where are you in this room?
This coming, or is it stay?
Our regular, no, our regular board meeting, not the whole, it's not an annual meeting.
Okay, well, let, let me know when your next meeting is, that I can address the, uh, the association. And I'll come in, we'll talk some very rough numbers, and you can take it back to the residents. And hopefully we can move forward, because like I said, the more we can get done at once, the more as a community we're going to save, um, in the mobilization fees and stuff like that. And it's, from what I understand, it's going to be, you know, because essentially you're paying for the roads in your sub, as a, as a sub, you guys are going to, you know, look at the different bids, look at the different companies, look at the qualities of the different companies, and move forward. You know, I, I think it would be fantastic, again, to use one company for the whole thing. But if you like, you know, company A versus Tim's sub using company B, you know, it might cost a little bit different, but it, it, from the way I understand it working, as long as you're paying for it through the, uh, through the special assessment, you have a little bit more of a say in who doesn't.
That's why, that's why I think it's hard, it's hard to get as many subs as we have on the same page. It's easier for us, because we have an association, you guys meet, like Shannon's sub, and they're not going to come up here until they see something in the paper says you're getting a special assessed. That's the only time they need to come up here.
Right, I think people ask, because there was supposed to be another meeting, it was brought up, it was brought up here, I think. The people were like, isn't there, isn't there a road meeting on, on this day? The room was booked for a road meeting, and I, I, I have no idea, you're going to have to call the offices. I, I don't know, and, you know, and now, aside from that, um, at the end of Fox Hollow, Jackie, a few years ago, it was resurfaced down there with blacktop. Was that a special assessment for the people at the end of my street at Eagle Road? Okay, I didn't think so, because that's going to be a point of contention. Why did they get their road fixed and I keep?
Like I said, my sub would have been told, your S O L will fix it yourself, and put where else the house number, and that's what we're doing, we're fixing our sub, and we're going to be paying for it. So, I mean, if.
There's going to be a lot of people on Fox Hollow in Rose Lane, I can guarantee it, that are going to call no fair. They got their road fixed in front of their house, I paid for it as a taxpayer, I don't, that's not, it's not my part of the street, but I paid to fix it anyways. You paid for it, you paid for it, there's going to be a lot of people that are, that are upset, why are certain people getting their roads fixed? And why do I have to pay for it when, when, you know, average Joe over here didn't have to pay for it? I'm just, just throwing it out there.
Sometimes there's some areas that aren't fixed because of safety features. If it's coming down a hill on a corner, could be, um, there is some reasons why.
I'm at the top of the hill, that was the.
No, they, they, they do fix potholes, they fix, they, they.
Hey, average Joe got his own fix.
I mean, they're not going to leave it till someone hit, you know, someone get hurt. They, they, you know, when it comes to the, the, I mean, when it comes down to it, it's, you know, if you want a nice new road and you live on that road, it's got to be paid for it.
Nothing's free, if you want it fixed, you're going to have to pay for it.
I'm not happy about it, man.
Well, but if you want it done, let's build a wooden bank, what do you have there? Uh, as far as letting somebody gain access across private property, you go onto a lake, you realize that that repairing an property owner assumes all the live building. That kayak tips over and drowns its point of entry, that's where you go back to sue. Uh, the next thing, as far as the generator things, looked into a bunch, a bunch of companies up in the U P of all places that do that, in Wisconsin, Minnesota, and the northern part of Michigan. And, uh, all sorts of neat little generators. Once upon a time under the Obama administration, there was renewable energy credits that consumers could get, and that way, they got a little perk out of it, and we could at that point sell them back the energy that we're not using during the day, and they had to pay the going rate for it. It's something that should be looked into, if we're going to keep the dam, it only makes sense.
They pay it at a one-to-one, wherever we pay for it, that's what they pay for, so.
The ones, the ones that I looked at, the guys, I mean, I got a bunch of stuff, I'd be glad to share with you. But at, at that dam, they put the pipes at the bottom, and they're small little PVC pipes, you don't even see them. And then it goes on up to a little, uh, a little like grist mill that you would make down there in the park, which would aesthetically look great. And you don't even see these pipes, they're down underneath the water, and then they high pressure the little tiny hydraulic generators that are in there. And I'll tell you what, they're about the size of your air conditioning, they're really small.
And, and actually, consumers would do the tie into the generator to their land, they take.
Correct, yep, they pay for it.
All you do is have to set the generator and the piping, which is really nothing, I mean.
But you, it, when, you would do that, assuming that you're going to put in a new dam slash spillway. And then that goes at the bottom, and.
But that's actually, could be put off to the side, and all you do is take a six-inch, six-inch PVC, it's all, it's all run by a six-inch PVC.
Right, right.
Put off to the side, and you're done.
Uh, basically, what, what they were talking about, they said that, you know, I sent them all the information, one copy that we have there, and a lot of it has to deal with the fall, the elevation change. And then that dictates the size of the pipe to the size of the generator, so that you can cycle it. So it maintains, and it always runs the same pressure, because that water is always there, the fall is always there, you're just tired of seeing a natural resource, it's not anything. Initially, the numbers were about twenty grand a year. That goes into our conference, to help for your roads.
I want to go back there, I guess I was wondering, is whose parcel is that?
The, which part?
The one off of, uh, State Road.
I, I don't know anymore, it was, it was, yeah, it was a doctor. What's it, yeah, it was a doctor.
Ross and the car wash?
Dr. Crossbeam. I don't, I don't know the branches anymore.
I didn't know if that was something that we owned or-
No, no, we-
No, that would be a-
I was thinking that would be a purpose by car wash.
Anything else, council? Motion to adjourn.